Alright, well my name's Jed Ness here. Two big things for me are transparency and accountability in government. And unfortunately, I don't think our commissioners have either of those things going on right now. I don't like the way that we're treated as taxpayers. The attitude that we receive, not getting transparent answers to questions that we ask, having to run around to get any answers, having this fight tooth to nail. Furthermore, I don't feel like we're being responsible with the money that we get in our county. I feel that there's a lot of wasted spending. I know that we have proper tax reassessment going on right now. Most likely, it's gonna raise our property tax, and we all know that. I get that the economy is not what it was a couple of years ago, and that things cost more money now. But we also have more people moving into the county, which are contributing and creating more revenue for our county. If we can't look at the money that we have now and find a way to make it work, all they're gonna do is just keep raising the property tax, left and right, left and right. And some of you sitting here voted to raise our property tax before. Some of you sitting here, Watson, had the most terrible attitude I've seen out of a public servant. And that's why I'm here today. I have to go to work. We all have to go to work. So we're doing this at 10 o'clock on a Monday, when your constituents don't even have the ability to come in here and speak. So I took time out of my schedule to come here and let you know that I don't like your attitude. I think you need to step up and resign. Whether you had bad intentions or not, of what happened with those mail-in ballots sitting in your office, it's still wrong and still illegal. And instead of sitting there, getting snarky, and having an attitude with people when they talk to you about it, you should do the right thing. So I'm here to challenge you to do the right thing, and resign from your position. That's the rest of my public comment. And I hope the rest of you guys take this as an example that there's people that are upset, and they just can't be here. But I'll make a point to be here. Accountability, transparency, start learning it, because I'm coming. Thank you.
So this was last week at the commissioner's meeting. And I do not normally go, this is my first time going to a commissioner's meeting. It is not my first time speaking to at least one of the commissioners, Watson. The other two commissioners have recently been elected as of the last election, but Watson has served a few terms before. That doesn't really matter. The election fraud that I was talking about, I do have photographic evidence. It has been reported to the state elections fraud department, okay? The photographic evidence is ballots that were locked in Brenda Watson's office, along with the scanners. And Brenda Watson, although was running unopposed, was on that ballot. But there could have been a write-in ballot, it doesn't matter. The fact of the matter is, it should have never, and I mean absolutely never, been under her custodial guardianship. And you're about to see, at the very end of the video, just try to remember this, because at the very end of the video, I do go to the voters' registration office. And we're definitely going back. Now, I was unable to attend the commissioner's meeting, this last one being yesterday. And when I got home, I received this message. And it appears that they have called the sheriff's department to attend the next meeting. And then here is a screenshot of that meeting that was recorded by Shannon Hines, who we'll get to meet later in the video. It was very pleasant to speak with, by the way. But you can see, this is during the Pledge of Allegiance. After that, this officer, law enforcement officer, does sit down and is out of view of the camera of the rest of the meeting. But right here is proof that they did indeed ask for the law enforcement officer to be present during this meeting. So, anyway, check out this interaction I had today. So I'm here at the courthouse in beautiful Perry County. Today, I'm doing a Freedom of Information Act request. Trying to get answers about where our ARPA funds are going or have went. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act for COVID money. There's a camera, they're watching us. I'm not sure how they're gonna feel about cameras here. So this is kind of risky. Also, the commissioners have asked for some police presence in the commissioners' meetings. Cannot confirm or deny, but I'm pretty sure it's because they didn't like that I went in there upset. Here we go. How we doing today, officer?
How are you? How are you?
I have a question for you. I am recording just, um, should I record all my interactions here?
Okay.
Peacefully. I have to do a Freedom of Information Act request regarding some financial statements within our county. I'm not sure if it's this building, or that would be the Veterans Building. File for that, but I believe that would be through the clerk, correct? County clerk? Financial records?
Yeah.
Freedom of Information Act?
For the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I imagine that's gonna be all over the commissioners' building, what we call the Veterans Building.
Yes, sir.
You know where that's at?
Yes, I do. Would that be, but would that be a clerk that I need to speak to, a county clerk?
The treasurer's office is over there.
Okay.
The commissioners are over there, the tax office is over there, so they'd have all those kind of records, right?
Awesome. Yeah, I would hope so. So I'll see what they say, and if not, I'll be back over here and we'll figure it out.
Very good.
So, thank you, officer.
You're welcome. Take care.
So we're now walking down to the Veterans Building. This is where the commissioners are at. These are the same commissioners that I'm investigating fraud on right now. At the last meeting, I called out one of our commissioners, as you've seen in the video. I'm not sure how this is gonna go. I just made presence with the police on purpose, so that they see who I am. I know that I'm not up to anything bad, right? So we have a positive police encounter. To let them know what my intentions were here today. That's the same sheriff's department that they asked for to attend the meeting in fear that I might show up again. Although I did nothing illegal, or said nothing illegal, and threatened nobody. I expressed my First Amendment right speech. So going here now is what they said. How we doing today?
Hi.
I'm not sure if I'm at the right office or not, but I'm trying to file for a Freedom of Information Act request on some financial documents here within the county.
Okay, so did you get the request forms from the website?
I'm gonna file them in person verbally.
Oh, so verbally? I think they have to be written.
No, no, there's law that protects it, because it's the American with Disabilities Act. Some people don't have the ability to write legibly.
Then you can send that request right to the commissioner's office at the end of the hallway.
Okay, so they're the ones who have all that information for us.
Well, I don't know, but to receive it, I'd start with the commissioner's office.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
How you doing? What's going on, sir?
You in, or somebody?
I just got in here, I'm not sure where they're at, couldn't see a bell, so I'm waiting patiently.
Who you wanna see, bud?
Uh, I have to file a Freedom of Information Act request.
Oh, okay, then you'll have to see the, probably Shannon, maybe, I don't know, who's there.
Appreciate it, thank you. How we doing?
Hi, I didn't realize anybody was out here.
Oh, I didn't see a bell.
Oh, that's, it's right here, that's okay.
Oh, I didn't know that was for this, so.
Don't worry.
I wanna file a Freedom of Information Act request.
Oh, like a write-to-know request?
Yeah, verbally, please.
I have the form.
Yeah, I know, I'd rather you write it, because they understand your handwriting better than mine.
Are you recording me?
I am recording you, yes ma'am.
Yeah, let me go get a form.
And I don't have any bad intentions, I'm just recording my interactions.
Sure.
Most of the time, they're good, so.
Let me go grab the form.
Thank you.
So this is the form that we have here. So is this?
These are my list of requests.
Oh, can I just make a copy and attach that to this?
I would be fine with that as well.
Okay.
I just didn't wanna have to keep rewriting it over, and then, but this is, uh...
Yeah, I'll make a copy, so you can keep your original. And so I'll make a copy of this, and then if you just put here your information and put "see attached", that will be fine.
Would I just be able to come back in like 10 days and pick this up?
Yeah.
And just not put a name under it?
You have to put your, like, your name on it, like, who is requesting it.
Okay, I can do that.
So you're gonna come back and pick it up?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm actually not sure what PA State dictates for the time limit for something like this. And I do believe it's five days with a 30-day extension.
Correct, that's right.
However, I do believe federally, it is like a 10-day.
I don't know federally.
But I don't know the extension, but regardless, I do know I'm asking for a lot, so if it's not available in five days, I'm not gonna, you know, obviously be surprised on that.
Okay.
But I will come back in probably Tuesday, next Tuesday, and then we'll just kind of see where we're at on it.
Do you wanna put, in addition to your name, do you wanna put your telephone number in case we need to reach out to you to say like, "Hey, it's not ready", and...
No, it's okay, I live very local.
Okay.
So, that's not a problem. Yeah, I won't be available this weekend anyway, so.
Okay, that's no problem. Okay, so if you want to put your information here...
I'll fill this out a while, and I'll hand that to you to make a copy.
I'll make a copy, yeah, and if you put the date that you're doing it in person, your name, that's what I'll need.
Okay, and then also, I'm gonna want these to be hard copies. I can't have it emailed, I can't do the computer very well.
Okay, so there might be a cost if there is making of copies and stuff.
That's okay, that's fine.
All right, so let me make a copy of this, and I'll have it. They'll let me in.
What is today's date?
The... Today is the 18th.
You're right.
Hey, can one of you guys let me in?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
That's what I thought.
Better check her ID.
Yeah. You'll let me back in then?
Yeah? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so I made a copy of this. Oh, do you wanna put "see attached", so then we know that it was attached? All right, and then you do want copies, you said, correct? All right, and you want them to be certified, or any, I mean, I don't know how.
I just would be happy just to get some, some copies. I mean, I'm not looking for anything in particular here. I'm just, I'm looking to learn.
Okay, yeah, not a problem at all, so I will work on this.
Okay, awesome. You'll see me in about a week. And are you Angela?
I am not Angela, I'm Shannon.
Shannon, I'm Jed, nice to meet you, Shannon.
Very nice to meet you.
Shannon Hines?
Yes.
Oh, okay, you record all the WebEx?
Yeah, I'm the one that has to do the...
Okay, I see your name quite a few times, I wasn't sure which one you were, so.
Yep, that's me.
Awesome. Thank you, appreciate it. Hey, have a good rest of your week.
You do the same, thank you.
Thank you. How we doing today? Got a question for you.
Sure.
I see that the Tax Claim Bureau is down with the Assessments Office. For delinquent taxes. So I was just wondering what your guys' role is here for, for your office, huh?
What do you do?
Oh, I just record my interactions. I'm doing a tour of the building, and just showing some of the resources that the county has.
For where, though?
What do you mean?
I'm not quite sure why you're...
Oh, I'm just seeing what services that this building offers. I'm just walking through the Veterans Building, I had some business to do here, so I'm just doing a tour of the building, and just showing the people what different offices have to offer.
My office has to do with real estate. We have a separate consent service that files new homes are built, they go out, they assess, do the measurements. The information is in the system, and that's how taxes get generated. Daddy also does the tax stuff.
And you guys are also in charge of the Cleaning Green and the Homestead, you guys take care of that as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. That's all I wanted to know. So, thank you very much. Hey, I hope you guys have a great week.
You too.
You too.
Here's the Veterans Affairs Office. This is the Veterans Affairs Building, or the Veterans Building, I guess they call it. Appointment only. And we were already in here, and that was the treasure and the dog and hunting license, we were already in there.
I'll sell that to you.
What's that?
I'll sell that to you.
I don't have any money.
I'm selling, whatever you want, I'm selling.
I got one dollar. Oh, you work for the Veterans Affairs? Okay, awesome. What all do you, are you in charge of taking care of here?
Well, just...
What do you handle? Yeah, okay. I know, I came in here a couple of years ago, doing like a records, getting some of my records I was having trouble getting.
Are you a veteran?
I am a veteran, yes sir.
Oh, okay, well then, where did you serve and when?
I was in the Army National Guard. I joined in 2009, was out in 2014.
Okay, did you deploy anywhere?
I did not.
Okay.
But, I was just, I'm just documenting what services are available here.
But I was gonna say, if you deploy, as the ATAC came out, especially if you were in the Gulf, there's a lot of resultants that they now set, so.
Right.
Have anything happened while you were in, in basic training or anything, anything occur?
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
But if...
But you do, so out of your office, I was just wondering all, what do you take care of more? Because I just know, like, I can get files, if I have trouble getting files, what other kind of work do you do out of this office?
Anything to do with veterans, anything at all, okay?
Okay.
I do, you know the flag that's on cemeteries and memorials?
Yes, sir.
That comes out of this office.
Okay.
Okay, the flag holders comes out of this office. Borough benefits for veterans, spacial benefits, children's benefits, education. If somebody has questions as far as home loans, okay, eligibility and things.
Excellent.
Anything at all to do with...
No VSO though, as far as, I'm sorry, disability claims?
Yeah.
You do that, you're a VSO officer as well?
I'm a VSO officer.
Excellent, I didn't know that. I thought the closest one was out of the gap, so.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm accredited both in the state, I'm accredited nationally. So I can, I can, I can work with anybody in any country, or in any state.
I might have to talk to you then, because I did have some...
But, but I am a VSO, a Veteran Service Officer. I also even do the accreditation through the American Legion, because I like their training. They do an excellent training session once a year. And I do their training as well as the states and the federal governments, because I really like their training. They hire an attorney's office, and that's, all of their attorneys, they work in close conjunction with the American Legion and all kinds of stuff.
Okay.
But they, they offer free charge, and so I do it.
That's awesome, that's excellent.
I'm in here early in the morning, taking their courses. And it's all online.
Oh, okay, nice.
What amounts to is virtual.
Yes, okay.
They'll do the instruction, and then, then after each instruction session, you take tests, and then you have to take a final test. So, but it really works out well for me, I...
Awesome, that's excellent. Well, I appreciate you, you know, taking your time to do all those things for us.
I see you're more into training than that.
Yes, sir. And what was your name?
Jim Scott.
Jim? Nice to meet you, I'm Jed Nessinger. I think I've seen your name around quite a few times, but...
Hopefully, it's all good.
Yes, sir, I just, I just know a lot of the elected officials and the people working in these buildings, just being involved, so.
Yep, so if you need a BA, doesn't matter what it may be, healthcare, veterans' healthcare, no matter what it may be.
Awesome.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
We're asking not to videotape.
Oh, you're allowed to ask that, sir, that's no problem.
Yeah.
Yes, you can ask, that's fine. I'm gonna say, I won't.
Hey, sir.
I'm not trying to be a problem, I'm staying in publicly accessible spaces. There's no expectation of privacy, and anything that my eyes can see, I can film, and this is constitutional federal law. And again, I'm not here for any problems, I'm being friendly, I'm just trying to display what services this building has to offer. What was your name, sir?
Well, he is saying federal law, you can, if you're in place, but... All right, thank you. Yep, yeah, we're just asking for security reasons.
Oh, I understand that, I'm willing to have an adult conversation with you. What was your name, sir?
Frank Campbell.
You would be one of the commissioners here, if that'd be correct. My name's Jed.
Yeah, I know.
Nice to meet you, Frank. Officially meet you, Frank. That's it. Again, I'm not...
Did you transfer me over to the sheriff's office?
I already informed him what I was doing today.
You did?
Yes, I reported them as well, they had no problem. I let him know that I was recording all my interactions while conducting my business, and that's what I'm doing here today.
Are you still conducting?
I am still conducting business, yes, sir. Um, I'll tell you, because...
Yeah, Sheriff Hammer in there, please.
Actually, it really does, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, we're concerned, yes. All right, who's the next person? All right, can you transfer me down? Hey, this is Frank Campbell, how are you doing? Hey, we have a gentleman over here videotaping throughout the building, we're concerned about the security. He, I talked to Solicitor Brown, and he recommended that the gentleman be escorted out of the building. You know, if you don't have any more business to be done. What exactly are you doing?
If you're gonna have law enforcement involved, I'd rather speak to them than speak to you at this point. Because I think we're past that part in the conversation. You're now getting law enforcement involved to try to have me removed, so I'd rather speak to them than speak to you at this moment.
The law enforcement.
If you're gonna call them to escort me out of the building, I'd rather explain to them what I'm doing than explain it to you.
You're, you're recording me.
I am video recording you, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry. On? All right, thank you. I'm, I'm just not sure what your point is.
I don't have a point, and I explained it to you when you walked up. Because everybody that walked up to me, I introduced myself, I don't have to, but I choose to. Second of all, everybody that I talked to, I explained what I was doing, including you. And I told you, I was filming and showing what resources are available in this building. I did conduct other business other than that, but you're not privy to that information.
I'm not what?
Well, I didn't speak to you about that, that business, so I'm just not, you're not privy to that information, I don't feel, I don't have to answer that.
The commissioners are in charge of this building.
Oh, I, I understand, but the taxpayers pay for this building.
I understand.
That makes it a public building, and this is a public space.
We're elected by the taxpayers.
I understand, but this is a public space, so I have every right to be here with a camera. Regardless of how you feel about security issues, that doesn't trump my constitutional rights. So for you to try to make me leave and escort me out of this building would not only be a first, but a Fourth Amendment right as well. And you're about, but that's okay.
So you're not about security at all? You don't want us to have security?
I'm about my rights, I won't give up my rights in the name of security. But it doesn't matter what my opinions or views are anyway, if I'm following the Constitution, everything I'm doing is legal. I have no will, ill will, or bad intentions.
Well...
The camera is for transparency and accountability. I think you've heard those words before, Commissioner.
I just, you know, we got phone calls, people were not at ease with what you were doing, so.
Well, that's not, is that a crime?
We have to look out for...
Is that a crime? Did I break the law?
I would rather err on the side of caution.
So you, even if that meant violating my rights, my Constitution? So you, even if that meant violating my rights, my constitutional rights?
We were violating your rights, but anyhow.
Do you know what the First Amendment is, Commissioner?
I'm I'm not getting into dialogue with you.
Okay, understood.
Uh, you know, I don't know what your point is.
Hey, how you doing?
How's it going, officer?
Dave's coming.
Sorry.
Dave's coming.
How's it going, officer?
How you doing?
Can I get names and badge numbers for?
I'm Dave Hammer, I'm the sheriff.
Dave Hammer, nice to meet you. Do you have a badge number or you don't use badge numbers?
I'm the sheriff.
Understood. And you, sir? Name and badge number?
O'Klein, Chief Deputy.
Sir?
Todd Trozko, eight six.
Awesome. I'm Jed. Nice to meet you guys. He called you here. He's he's your complaintant.
What are you doing?
Oh, I was just conducting business and.
He he commended the Commissioner's Office, talked to Shannon, found a right to know. He was videoing Shannon as he was doing the right to know. Uh and then he left there and he went into assessment, you know, and we got a call from assessment saying there was a gentleman in there videotaping. So the people then were ill at ease about the whole thing. And I did talk to Bill Bunt and he thought the gentleman should be escorted out of the building for, at least for security reasons anyhow.
Okay, I don't know that there's anything that's doing anything illegal. He's, he can, anywhere he's allowed to be, he's allowed to to tape in a public, in a public building. They can, they can come in over to the courthouse and do the same thing as, they can't come in, they can't come in the Sheriff's Office because it's restricted area because of the certain things we have in the office. So we've had training on this before, that the the First Amendment auditors, I think is what they're called. Is that what?
I'm not a First Amendment auditor. But that is, that is, that is, they're the First Amendment auditor, yes. I was just documenting the resources that are available and everybody that I spoke to, I let them know what my intentions were, although I don't have to. And I had some really good conversations with everybody. I don't, again, I don't have to introduce myself. I chose to introduce myself to everybody I interacted with. And I actually talked to one of your officers before I came over here. I stopped in the courthouse to ask where the proper, the proper channel to get the information that I was um looking to get the information from. And I also let him know that I was recording, that I had no ill intent, and I was just recording my interactions. So I even checked in. I did so.
Are you done then?
Um, I am wrapping up here. I probably would have been out of here if, you know, he didn't come up and ask me to stop recording and then get you involved to try to forcefully have me removed from the building. But I appreciate you taking the time to educate our Commissioner here on what my rights are.
I don't need to educate him. He's a smart guy and he knows what's going on. But if you're done, we can all go.
And if I'm not done?
If you're not done and you're causing a disturbance, sir, then you'll be removed.
Okay, what would be considered causing a disturbance, just so we're on the same page? No, I'm not gonna use my imagination. I wanna make sure we're on the same page because I'm not trying to violate any laws or lawful orders.
If you're done with your business here, it's, if he wants you to go, then you can go. If you're not done, then go conduct your business and then we'll get going.
Okay, awesome. I'll be out of here in a few minutes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Hammer, thank you.
I don't wanna be the guy that doesn't do anything.
A lot of historic stuff here in the home.
Yeah, I was taking pictures or well, videos. I can slow down, but um like even this display case and some of these plaques are really, oh, I didn't see these ones back here, actually. Oh, that's the Vietnam one, too. Awesome. Well, I'm gonna walk down, take a couple of videos and I'm gonna walk out this door.
I'll work with you.
Okay, understood.
Sometimes people get nervous for no reason.
I understand. I do believe you recalled about me already, so I can't confirm or deny, but I know they asked for some presents in the last Commissioner's meeting, so. I think I understand why, but that's okay. I am very transparent. I'm about accountability and transparency. And that's what I told the Commissioners and I told them here again today. And I said I have no um bad intent, even the information I'm requesting. I'm not looking for anything in particular. I'm just looking for the information to go over it. And furthermore, I am also an elected official myself, so I do know where all those rights start. Transparency, that's all. These are all the Commissioners from the past? Wow. Thank you.
I think it goes back all the way to, yeah, eighteen twenty.
Yeah, I've seen that one. Wow, that's wild. There are new board here soon, huh?
It'll be long after I'm gone.
Yeah, I believe I used to work with your nephew, Nate. Yeah, doing drywall? Yeah, I worked with him years ago, so. Is he still doing drywall? He's not, good for him. Oh, really? Excellent. Good for him. Yeah, he's a solid guy. He's a very level-headed, thinking guy. Awesome. Well, thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. I hope you have an awesome day. Thank you. Sorry they wasted your time. Get some shots of the building here. Let you know they're recording us, but they have a problem. We record them. And the only people that had a problem were those who wanna hide things. That's okay. I also wanna point out that I've been inside all of these offices before. I am an elected official. I have ran for political positions um outside of what I hold now, which is just a township auditor. Uh but I have used these resources and talked to majority of these people before. But it's just never a problem because, well, I didn't have a camera. This is a fairly new building. This is the Perry County Freedom Building. I love how they left. They thought I was done. I'm not done. Come on. I don't think we're having a problem here. The only people that had a problem was that Commissioner. And it's just because for whatever reason they're scared that I am publicly speaking out about them. Voter Registration Office. How's it going? I'm just checking out the office here. Oh, that's okay. No, thank you. I just talked to the officers. They just left that building and we had. This is a publicly accessible area and any, anything that. I just talked to the officers. I was just asking what services you guys provide here. I was just documenting the different offices within our county and just showing what resources are available.
Right, we do voter registration and elections. Hi, can I help you?
Yeah, I need somebody to start our car.
Um, I can call the Sheriff's Department. I send them over. Okay?
Is it gonna cost me anything?
I don't know. I don't know.
I can't get the stupid van started.
Where are you parked at?
Right over here.
Okay, what color is your car?
Black.
Okay, alright, I'll see what I can do, okay?
I just have another question for you. Are you guys also in charge of all of the ballot systems and the ballot collecting and counting as well? Does that fall under your responsibilities at this office?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Is there certain like levels?
I I'm not answering any more questions.
Okay, understood. What was your name? As a public official, what was your name?
Thank you.
Do you have a name, ma'am? These are your public officials, guys. Try to get you guys information. Sorry they wouldn't give it to you. We'll try again. Not how I thought the interaction would go, unfortunately. The police will be here. They hit the silent alarm, I'm pretty sure. So this is my first time ever recording, um at least blatantly recording inside of our tax paid uh facilities, right? And I still have a lot more to go, but for a first time, I'm pretty happy. Uh there were nerves, but I think there's always gonna be nerves when you do anything in the beginning. But by the time that the sheriffs got there, my nerves were already settled because I know I went above and beyond and gave them more than what they needed, right? Even making contact with the Sheriff's Department, as you've seen in the beginning, uh before I went on to go into the Veterans Building. I was pretty sure I needed to go to the Veterans Building to start, but I knew that walking into the courthouse there, the town hall, there would be police presence at the door for security and I could let them know my intentions. I do plan to do more. I know I got out of the Veterans, I'm sorry, the Voter Registration Building fairly quickly. But it just wasn't going to be worth it, um especially because I just talked to the sheriffs and it would have been a lot of the same thing. We are gonna be going back because it is gonna be part of another investigation. And I just want you to know that there are issues within our county and with our Commissioners, and it's not just me. There's multiple people who are putting pressure on them and we are getting stonewalled every step of the way. They are not about accountability or transparency. They are in it for themselves. There are only certain things that I can prove, right? So I will only talk about the things that I can prove. Or I'll only show you my way of getting that proof to prove these things, but I will never go off of accusations. Just so you understand, it's accountability and transparency. The things that I'm looking for, the FOIA information that I requested, I am not looking for anything in particular. Do I think there's gonna be missing paperwork and some fraud involved in there? I will say I would not be surprised. And it's not because of any one thing in particular. Uh it's because of the mismanagement that I've seen thus far within our county and our financial issues that we have. Alright, I'm gonna jump off here and who like I can get, the Sheriff's Office does not seem concerned with me. And I will say some of the officers, they hmm, they didn't seem too happy. But I like how immediately they're like, yeah, First Amendment auditor. I'm, I wonder how many there's been around here. It's a, it's like a county, like a rural county, so. I don't think they see a whole lot of uh people videotaping their interactions. So I do wanna shout out uh Sheriff, Sheriff Dave Hammer from the Perry County Sheriff's Department in saying that um you did not violate my rights, you knew what my rights were, and you even said that your guys had some training on um. They said, he said we had training, they said First Amendment auditor, so I don't know if your training was, if their training was for First Amendment auditors, how to deal with them. Or if it was like civil rights training to actually tell them what people's rights are, but. Alright, um, I was, yeah, I'm jumping off.